Good evening. Welcome to the July tenth, twenty twenty-five meeting of the Northampton City Council. I'm Alex Jarrett. I'm County Council President. I'll be presiding this evening. Vice President Rachel Maori is absent. This meeting and all participating on Zoom will be audio and video recorded, and the meeting can also be watched on Comcast Channel fifteen or by streaming on Northampton Open Media's YouTube channel. Let's call the city council to order. Could you take the role, please, Laura?
Counselor Dobbs.
Yeah.
Counselor Elkins.
Here.
Counselor Jarrett.
Yeah.
Counselor Clemmer.
Yeah.
Counselor LaBarge.
Here.
As Council President stated, Counselor Maori is not able to join tonight. Counselor Moulton.
Here.
Counselor Perry. Uh-oh, I wonder if he dropped. Counselor Perry.
Yeah.
And Counselor Rothenberg.
Here.
Council President, you have a quorum.
Thank you. Tonight's highlights include financial orders for the Northampton Public Schools Special Education Fund, end-of-year transfers, and intermunicipal agreements, orders suspending rules for food trucks for the Taste of Northampton, and acquiring seventy-two acres for conservation and recreation in the Mineral Hills South, two stop sign and parking ordinances, and zoning ordinance for that reduces minimum off-street motor vehicle parking requirements and adjusts bicycle parking requirements, and an extension request for the Northampton Reparations Study Commission. First thing on their agenda is public comment. If you wish to make a public comment, please use the raise hand feature. It's in the bottom menu bar. You click on react and then raise hand. And I thought I saw maybe that there was someone calling in by phone. If you are, you hit star nine to raise your hand. And if you're having trouble raising your virtual hand, just turn on your video and physically raise your hand. You can also submit a written public comment. You can email it to citycouncil@northhamptonma.gov. It will be sent to all councilors and will be part of the public record. And before you begin, please state your name and your city or town. To ensure that everyone has an equal opportunity to speak, the council limits comments to a maximum of two minutes. And after two minutes, I'll ask you to please finish your sentence. We don't respond during public comment. It is your time to speak. Our rules state that councilors and members of the public shall conduct themselves with civility and respect at all times. Finally, you can speak on any topic. It doesn't need to be an item on the agenda, and all comments are to be directed to the council. The first person is Ace Taylor. Oops, actually. Sorry, Ace. I accidentally lowered your hand rather than unmuting you. Can you? There, there we go. Welcome, Ace. Your name and city or town, please.
Thanks. Ace Taylor, Ward Three, Northampton. Um, I have a weird comment this week. Um, the minutes from the May, I believe, tenth meeting. Um, I really appreciate all of the transcription that is being done and the fact that it's easy to access in public record. On that note, I would like to ask for two corrections. Um, the first is my pronouns, which are they/them. Um, they are listed here as he/him, which is an easy mistake to make and an easy mistake to fix. Um, the other one is at the vote to close the comment, if I'm remembering, or to close public, to close the hearing, if I'm remembering correctly, Counselor Rothenberg voted no. Um, if I'm misremembering, please let me know, but I believe that's the meeting where there was a single no vote in that. Uh, thanks very much.
Thanks, Ace, and we can follow up with you after the meeting. Um, next is Nathan Chung. Okay, welcome, Nathan.
Thank you very much. Nathan Chung, Northampton resident. I want to remind everyone that the Constitution's First Amendment rights on free speech, including political speech, applies to everyone regardless of whether they work for a government agency or not. If you work for a government agency, some specific rules apply, such as doing it on your own time as your general member of public and not using official logos and email addresses. This restriction is not as strict for elected government employees compared to appointed ones. For details, you can refer to State Ethics Commission Advisory eleven dash one. Recently, some people used profanity to criticize me on social media over political views. Specifically, somebody called, somebody wrote Nathan Chung, kiss A S S extraordinary, working in behalf of the marriage rule. On Counselor Rothenberg's July seventh post about firing an employee over using an official email address to send a complaint about a commission to the public. I remind others that I am a fellow human being with basic dignity. I spent my childhood in nineteen-eighty South Korea that was ruled by a dictator who shot at, shoot to shoot at protesters and teachers beat up students, uh, whose parents were too poor to pay bribes. And there was another coup attempt this December third, last December third. If you want to make a complaint about me or insult me, I would ask you to either leave me alone or do it by looking at me in the eye. And you can contact me using my personal email address, which is on my blog at cityuntangle.com. If you want to do it, please contact me via email and we can arrange a meeting. I welcome your insults if you feel strongly about it. And the blog also has my presentation about the South Korean coup of two thousand twenty-four. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next is Meg Robbins.
Okay, I think it's fine. Hi.
Welcome, Meg.
Hi, uh, Meg Robbins, Northampton, and I'm intrigued by the twenty-five-three-hundred ordinance reducing minimum off-street parking requirements, and I had a little time to, um, take a look at it and had some questions. So it seems to be an ordinance that benefits developers and has little benefit for city residents. It opines that we have a plethora of unused parking spaces in the city which fill up otherwise useful, and it could be used for many other good outcome space. The ordinance cites Governor Healey's Unlocking Housing Production Commission and references findings it says it has from Greater Boston Study about excessive parking requirements, raising development costs, finding only sixty-two percent of built parking spaces were needed. It then states that local research in central and western Mass communities face similar excesses, but it doesn't cite the source nor any stats about that. It's hard to see how this translates to Northampton where newly granted planning permission developments have already provided little or reduced parking options for the five-story seventy tenants in each building, despite what we all know is already a very tight on-street parking situation for greater downtown. Most considering, most concerning is that the ordinance says parking management techniques such as meter parking, limited-time parking, monthly permanence, or residential parking permits can be used as revenues for further enhanced street bicycle and sidewalk maintenance. And I read this to mean that as my home does not have a driveway and I park in the street, I will soon have to pay for that privilege. My neighbors who live in the brick apartment building on Prospect Street, a building with no parking available, jockey for parking every night. The cost for a monthly pass to downtown parking is about twelve hundred dollars a year, and that does not lower tenant costs nor make life more affordable for residents. It sounds more like this is a step towards becoming Cambridge, where people do get out over who gets the parking spot. And I get it, we want to reduce car dependence, but please, let's do it honestly and thoughtfully and not through this mismatch of deregulation that really is for developers, not residents. If the city's going to okay seventy apartment high raises, let's be realistic about the knock-on impacts and not exacerbate them by pretending that we have a transportation infrastructure to support it. We need to do first things first. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Benjamin Spencer.
Hello, everybody. My name is Benjamin Spencer. I live in Northampton. Sorry, my lighting is weird. Um, there we go, a little bit better. Um, so, um, well, so I'm here tonight, um, to, um, to tell everyone, um, as you may know, I have been someone who's been, um, outspoken in support of the Picture Main Street project and, um, attended city council meetings in support of the project when the, um, when the resolution that the council passed in, I want to say, twenty-twenty-four went through, and, um, continued to be an advocate for the project, and that includes creating, um, yes, Picture Main Street lawn signs. And, um, and I'm happy to say that we are, um, putting together an order for another round of Yes Picture Main Street lawn signs. And if people would like one for their yard to sort of express their support for the project, uh, you are welcome to go to yespicturemainstreet.org, and you will find on that website information about the project and also a link for a GoFundMe so that we can get some more signs out there. So thank you all for all the work that you do and, um, and yeah, I'm looking forward to tonight's meeting for the other agenda items as well, but that's why I'm here tonight. So, thank you.
Thank you. Next is Renika.
Hi, my name is Renika Montgomery Tomaclo. I live in Ward Three in Northampton, and I am a member of the Northampton Reparations Study Commission. And that is one of the agenda items tonight, and I come to talk about some of the recent challenges we've had with the commission. As of our last meeting on June tenth, we voted eight to two to continue our work. Now, we have already extended our time that we were previously allotted by the city council, but we recognize that we have many issues with our current report, and we want to go through with an implementation phase. The problem being that in the interim since that meeting, we have had the unceremonious firing of our clerk and the resignation of our chair without giving us adequate time to, um, appoint a secondary chair to take over. So we have not, we are not currently not allowed, able to meet because we do not have a quorum of members. So I am here asking, um, the city council, when they are talking about reparations, to understand that these two things together look like a constructive dismissal of the commission. There are insufficient numbers of members to hold quorum, and we do not have a clerk. So I ask you to take that into account when you are talking about the next phases of our commission and what you want to do for us, and that is all.
Thank you. Next is Daniel.
Uh, Daniel, yeah, go ahead. Have you, have you disabled my video, Alex?
No, uh, but I will ask to start if you're having trouble.
Um, no, I, I think I got it. It's just saying that, uh, you guys have disabled.
Yeah, I know, I said that. The start video permission is on.
Hey, everybody. Welcome. All right, let's start my time. Um, yeah, so, you know, I was hopeful that I would be able to talk a little bit about the resident-led zoning ordinance that we've got coming before the Legislative Committee next week, uh, next Thursday. Everybody should keep an eye out for that. Uh, me and my neighbors have been working towards that for a long time. Uh, hopefully, that's the beginning of us pushing back against some of this radical deregulation in the form-based code. Um, that being said, I now have to take this on, uh, which by way of President Jarrett and Counselor Elkins, uh, is, as Meg mentioned, uh, to reduce the amount of parking that's required in the city, which, when you think about who it's required of, it's required of developers. Uh, who are the current regulations protecting? They're protecting the current people who live here, the residents. Zoning regulations and stuff like that protect the people who live across the street from these buildings. So when you lift these things, it lifts our protections. Anybody who lives in the city knows that increasing amounts of cars, large cars, parking on our streets are constraining our streets and making it near impossible to get around in certain places. As the candidate Meg pointed out, um, you know, this seems to be a real handout to the developers. I don't really see it, uh, serving us much. The underlying facts are not there, despite the more Healey, uh, study. The need for more housing, especially affordable housing, is real. But when you strip parking requirements like this, is real. But when you strip parking requirements like this, people in affordable housing end up having to pay hundreds, if not thousands of dollars for just a parking spot. Not to mention, let's be real about this, guys. Everybody in this city drives a car because the traffic is bad. If we really want to get people off of cars, we need to do something about our bus service. Our bus service right now is inadequate even for the people who need it and depend on it, let alone a whole new influx of people riding it. Uh, we need to massively invest in that. We need to help the accessibility community, um, access a lot of this stuff. You need to be able to park in front of a building. If you have mobility problems, if you're pregnant, if you're elderly, when we strip parking requirements, they don't build the parking, you can't park in front of these places. And that cuts these people out of our downtown, out of the system and out of the process. When we pass massive deregulations like this by Fiat in a giant thing, if we want to change regulations.
If you could finish your sentence.
If we want to, I'm sorry, I heard Counselor Clemmer. If, if we want to, um, actually pass some deregulations and affect zoning, there is an actual process for which we can do that. This broad brush thing, which by the way, also lowers maximum parking requirements is not the way to do it. Thank you.
Next is Marcia. Welcome, Marcia.
Hello. Yes, hello. Can you see me?
No. Wait.
Okay, there I am. Okay, thank you, everybody. Um, I just wanted to clarify one thing. Uh, my name is Marcia. I'm from Ward Three. I'm also a member of the commission, um, for reparations. Uh, we had asked to have, uh, Renika speak for us tonight. And my understanding is that we've been told that we cannot speak, um, because there is not a chair for the commission. Unfortunately, I don't understand, we've spoken before, whether we had a chair there or not. So I don't quite understand why that, right, has been taken away from us. And so I'm requesting that that be lifted. There seems to be only two or three of us that are from the commission that are not already on the city, that are, uh, not on the city council. So, um, it doesn't seem fair that the city councillors would be able to speak, but we cannot, um, about specifically, uh, the work of the commission. As you all know, we voted eight to two to continue to ask for a renewal of the work for a year um, from, uh, our start from whenever we, uh, get the start date for the renewal. We want a year from that time to finish up the work, um, correct the report that has, uh, typos and problems with it. And then, um, uh, conclude the work, uh, with also having some input from the community in terms of feedback on the draft report, which we've not been able to do yet. Um, so that was the request. We are, we do have enough people to vote in a new chairperson and to seat a new young person onto the council. So, and we were told that we couldn't meet, um, going forward. Um, I'm not sure when it actually or if it seems, so I'll answer. So I'm requesting one that would be able to speak tonight specifically to go in forward with the work and then also to, um, making sure that, um, we have an opportunity to, um, replace anyone who stepped off the council. Of course, most people know by now the chair stepped, stepped down without giving us any notice, um, which to me seems to be very sabotaging towards the commission. I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
Oh, I said that's time. Would you just finish your sentence, please?
Oh, sure. Um, which seems to be, to be a sabotaging step toward the commission. So, um, we do need to, uh, be able to finish the work. So I appreciate your time and attention.
Thank you. Next is Janet.
Hi there. Janet Kyle from Leeds, Ward Seven. Um, I wanted to address two things. One is to the city council body and specifically to council member Perry. Uh, at the last city council meeting, I was making remarks and Counselor Perry was laughing while I was commenting. Um, and I've witnessed this behavior from him toward other people making comments and specifically a couple of other council members. I think that that behavior is really not acceptable. It's actually pretty deplorable for a city council member, particularly someone who's a city councillor at large. Um, it actually is an example of why at the last meeting I asked that he recuse himself from discussion about the continuance of the reparations commission. Uh, second item is that I would like to appeal to you to please vote to, to allow the commission to continue. Um, there is still more work, obviously, that they need to do. Um, as many of you know, and probably were present at the historic Northampton exhibit sometime within the last week. Um, I've heard, I haven't seen it yet, but I've, I've read about it. I've seen the website. And apparently there was a short period of time that the event was actually put together, but about six years of research prior to that event had been put in place. So clearly, there's, there's work to be done. There's studies to be done, um, more people to discuss matters with. So I'm just asking that you please vote for the commission to continue so that they can continue their work. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next is Gwen.
Okay. Hello. Thank you so much. My name is Gwen Nabad, and I live in Ward One. And I'm here tonight, um, to support the continuation of the reparations committee, um, as, as things iron themselves out and continue. I, I just really want that to continue here in the city of Northampton. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, thanks, everyone, for public comment. We'll move on to announcements from councillors.
President Jarrett, I received a message that a member of the public had their hand raised and then lowered by a host. Um, Colette.
Okay.
She just came in the way.
You should be able to speak now. Sorry if there was a.
She might have lost her connection.
Nope, here she is. Um, are you able to unmute? Let me try to ask you to unmute again.
Hi.
Yeah, welcome.
Thank you. Hello, and thank you for your time. My name is Colette, and I live in Chicopee. However, I'm deeply connected to Northampton. I'm a disabled veteran, and sometimes I'm at the VA Center three times this week, including today. I'm in a theater group also, which I just performed, um, at the APE Gallery on Main Street in our residency. I also play softball at Summer League at the Sheldon Fields, and that's what brings me here today. On June seventeenth, the porta potty at the field was removed due to vandalism. And I'm here to ask for the expedited replacement of this unit. I love Northampton. I love the parks. I appreciate the parks and rect apartment, and I have empathy for the difficulty of dealing with vandalism. But please consider that our softball season ends in the second week of August. Not having a bathroom facility is difficult for me because of my health, but also makes my world smaller because my spouse and mother both need to have one available, uh, for their specific health conditions as well. And they want to attend games, but I can't let them if I, I know there was, isn't one available. I know I'm not the only one struggling with this. This is a safety concern and a disability issue for us. I would like to advocate more for be done, to be done to Sheldon Fields. There are drainage issues on the fields, broken water spigots, and one of the fields is so deteriorated that it can't be used at all. But I'm starting with please getting that porta potty back because it is a safety issue for all of us that play and watch the games. I know the wheels of bureaucracy can grind slowly sometimes, so please don't let this be one of those times. Our season's over so soon, and the team alone, my team alone, has already played four games and a practice without a bathroom available. There has to be a company that will deliver one quickly and service it regularly. Please expedite replacement of the porta potty to Sheldon Fields. Thank you.
Thank you. Hey, anyone else who may have had any technical difficulties? You can always turn on your video and, and raise your hand or, or raise your Zoom hand. Okay, thanks. Thanks, everyone. Uh, announcements from councillors and the mayor. Counselor Dubs. Oh, you're muted.
Sorry about that. Um, I wanted to mention that the, um, Northampton Disability Commission, um, we collaborated with the, uh, with the disability commissions from Amherst and East Hampton on a mini film festival. Um, East Hampton recently, uh, screened a film on July fifth, uh, called Patrice. And, um, um, coming up on July sixteenth from five to eight P M in Amherst at the Bangs Community Center is a, a film called The Ride Ahead. And so these are films that are disability-related films. And then, uh, on July twenty-ninth, uh, which is a Tuesday from three thirty to five thirty P M at the Senior Center here in Northampton, we'll be screening the film Tallywhacker. So, um, we'd love to, for people to come on out and, and see that. And, um, yeah, just wanted to mention that. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Elkins.
Um, yeah, so I was just, uh, announcing that on July seventeenth, um, we have a double header, um, which is to say, uh, legislate, and this isn't, uh, this part isn't posted yet. Um, the, we anticipate there's a parking issue and there's two more issues that we expect to be referred to Legislative Matters Committee, um, tonight. Uh, and then also the Joint, um, City Council Legislative Matters and Planning Board Public Hearing on the, um, the resident petition that Mr. Brindell spoke about, um, is also on for the seventeenth. I anticipate that hearing is on for six thirty. The legislative matters on the other, um, issues that are referred, um, we're going to take care of quickly beforehand at six o'clock. So the six o'clock part, not on the, on the, the calendar yet, but will be posted, uh, timely. And then the hearing is set for six thirty for the joint, um, hearing on the, um, resident petition.
Thank you. And just to be clear, it is the regular ordinances that, uh, will be on that six o'clock agenda, not the zoning ordinance that we're referring tonight. That will be advertised for a public hearing later.
Right. To be clear, I think there are a couple of like, uh, like stop sign things that are ordinances that'll, that'll be referred. The, um, and so just to clarify, the, um, the zoning parking ordinance, um, will have to be scheduled later. We have, we, that requires a hearing and requires more, uh, time for notice. So that's what's on the agenda next week.
Counselor Rothenberg.
Thank you. Um, Counselor Dubs and I wanted to make an announcement about the Special Olympics and the people who performed in the Summer Games. Uh, Counselor Dubs, would it be all right if I read the list? Great. And just a little description about what they are. We received a request to just, um, recognize these people who participated in this. So we have a short description. The Special Olympics of Massachusetts Annual Summer Games took place at Harvard University on June sixth to eighth, twenty twenty-five. Over fifteen hundred athletes and unified partners from across the state competed at the Games in one of five spring sports offered, which were track and field, swimming, volleyball, tennis, and powerlifting. Hampshire County Sports, a local Special Olympics program, which draws participants from Northampton, Amherst, and beyond, sent two teams to Boston, sixteen track and field athletes and fourteen swimmers. So thank you for your hard work and for representing us there. And just to read your names, we had Matthew Boynton, Sydney Mininger, Lucy Pash, Bentley Mirabella, Katie O'Reilly, and Jasper Peterson. And I think our clerk may also know someone who was there. And so again, we just, on behalf of Ward Three, Ward Four, and the city of Northampton, we congratulate you for your hard work.
Thank you. Mayor Shara.
Evening, councillors. Nice to be with you. Um, I am, um, well, first, actually, I can give an update on, uh, there's public comment just about the porta potty situation at Sheldon Field. We have identified a new vendor. Um, and if it has not been delivered yet today, then we hope by tomorrow, um, that a new porta potty should be, uh, delivered there. So we've secured a new vendor. We were fired by the previous vendor because of, uh, vandalism. Um, but we did, um, find a new one and did expedite having, um, having one delivered. So it should hopefully be there by tomorrow. Um, and I hope you all will let me recognize, um, by reading a proclamation, uh, His Holiness, the Dalai Lama's ninetieth birthday. I, um, was at a wonderful event this weekend with the Regional Tibetan Association of Massachusetts, recognizing the Dalai Lama's ninetieth birthday and also, um, observing the Year of Compassion, which is starting in recognition of his ninetieth birthday. And, um, there's also a really remarkable photo exhibit that I think is at the State House right now. There is, today there was, um, uh, a ceremony at the State House. And so the exhibit will be at the State House, and I'm hoping that it will be, uh, in Western Mass. Um, and, uh, hopefully we can get it to come to Northampton at some point. Um, but, so I'd like to recognize, uh, this proclamation honoring the life and legacy of His Holiness the Fourteenth Dalai Lama and observing the Year of Compassion. Whereas His Holiness the Fourteenth Dalai Lama, Tenzin Ghatso, has dedicated his life to promoting peace, compassion, and universal responsibility, earning worldwide recognition as a tireless advocate for human rights, democracy, religious freedom, and environmental protection. Whereas His Holiness the Dalai Lama was awarded the Nobel Peace Prize in nineteen eighty-nine for a steadfast commitment to nonviolence and dialogue and resolving conflicts, particularly in advocating for the rights and freedoms of the Tibetan people. Whereas His Holiness the Dalai Lama's four principal commitments have been a guiding force in advancing the principles of human values, nonviolence, interfaith harmony, and environmental sustainability, inspiring countless individuals around the world. And whereas to honor the life and legacy of His Holiness the Fourteenth Dalai Lama, the central Tibetan administration and the global Tibetan diaspora will observe his ninetieth birth anniversary as a Year of Compassion from July sixth, twenty twenty-five to July fifth, twenty twenty-six, through a series of cultural celebrations, exhibitions, public talks, and conferences highlighting His Holiness's enduring, enduring contributions to humanity, compassion, and world peace. And whereas the people of the city of Northampton recognize and celebrate the extraordinary contributions of His Holiness the Dalai Lama to global peace, humanitarian efforts, environmental perfection, and embodiment of humanity. And whereas the Tibetan Policy and Support Act of twenty twenty, signed into law by the United States, reaffirms that the selection of the Tibetan Buddhist leaders, including a future Dalai Lama, should be determined solely by the Tibetan Buddhist community without interference from any government, particularly the People's Republic of China. And whereas Tibetan Buddhists believe in the sacred tradition of reincarnation, and the Dalai Lama has stated unequivocally that only he, in consultation with the Tibetan Buddhist community, holds a spiritual authority to determine whether he will reincarnate and under what circumstances. And whereas the people of Northampton stand firmly in support of human rights, religious freedom, and the self-determination of peoples, including the rights of the Tibetan people to preserve their religious and cultural heritage free from political interference. And now therefore I, Jewish, our mayor of the city of Northampton, do your right to claim the period from July sixth, twenty twenty-five to July fifth, twenty twenty-six as the Year of Compassion in honor of His Holiness the Dalai Lama's ninetieth birthday. And proclaim July sixth, uh, twenty twenty-five, the ninetieth birthday of His Holiness the Dalai Lama as the day of compassion. In witness where I have said my hand and printed the syllabus in the city of Northampton on, um, the, uh, sixth day of July in the year of twenty twenty-five. So thank you, and, um, let us all recognize this Year of Compassion. Thank you, councillors.
Thank you. Laura, could you make Garrick Perry a co-host? He had to leave and come back, so. Are there other announcements from councillors? Uh, I have one. Um, the, the meeting schedule for the city council. I just wanted to remind folks that the city council meets once in July and once in August, uh, both on Zoom only. Uh, and the August date is Thursday, August twenty-first. And we'll resume our regular first and third Thursday schedule in September in hybrid form. Okay, we'll move on to um, the consent agenda. I'm going to read the consent agenda and ask if there are any removals for discussion. The minutes of May twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-five, which was the fiscal year twenty-six budget hearing, uh, the first part, twenty-five point two seven seven appointments to various committees. These all received positive recommendations from city services on July seventh to the Arts Council, K Carroll, a re- recommendations from City Services on July 7th to the Arts Council, Kay Carroll, a reappointment, to the Community Preservation Committee, Brian Adams, a reappointment, also to the Community Preservation Committee, Devin Bruce, a reappointment, to the Conservation Commission, C. Mason Marone and Paul Foster Moore, reappointments, to the Disability Commission, Amy Sugahara, a reappointment, to the Board of Health, Janet Grant, reappointment, to the Housing Partnership, Gordon Shaw, reappointment, Parks and Recreation Commission, Erin Basuvis, a reappointment, to the Planning Board, Chris Tate and Jana White, reappointments, to the Trust Fund Committee, Jake Disinger, a reappointment. 25.281 appointments to various committees, all positive recommendations from City Services on the 7th of July. Um, to the Board of Assessors, Denny Nolan and Mary Penny, reappointments, to the Disability Commission, Emma Cornwell, reappointment, to the Historical Commission, Martha Lyon, um, to fill the position of the WMAI nominee, to the Housing Partnership, Richard Abuza and Guinevere Nabad, reappointments, the Parks and Recreation Commission, Thomas Dunphy, reappointment, to the Planning Board, Stacy Dekey, reappointment, and to the Transportation and Parking Commission, Devin Bruce, a reappointment. And process note, um, as the only new appointment, the appointment of Amy Lawton to the Disability Commission will be taken up at the August 21st City Council meeting. The appointment is being withdrawn from this order and resubmitted so as not to exceed the 45-day timeframe for City Council confirmation of certain appointments prescribed by Charter Section 2-10. 25.283, in order to reprogram various ITS account balances to ITS projects, second reading. 25.286, in order to appropriate fiscal year 26 cash capital to various capital projects, second reading. 25.288, in order to approve fiscal year 25 end-of-year transfers, miscellaneous. 25.298, the appointment of Katie Deppen as Central Services Director for referral to City Services. 25.301, appointments to various committees for referral to City Services to the Arts Council, Eamon Edge, Garrett Williams, Kelsey Sotcha Bishop, and Luke uh Kavaknek. The first two are reappointments, the second two are to fill vacancies. To the Board of Health, Joanne Levin, a reappointment, to the Disability Commission, Amy Lawton, to fill a vacancy, to the Historical Commission, Martha Hoppin, to fill a vacancy, to the Parks and Recreation Commission, Jeffrey Dawson and Kelsey Flynn, reappointments, to the Zoning Board of Appeals, Elizabeth Silver, reappointment. Uh, those are the items on the consent agenda. Are there any removals?
Yes.
Counselor Rothenberg.
Um, for appointments, there are four appointments and the cash capital that I would like to remove.
Are they, could you, could you just state the numbers of the um ones that the appointments are in? Because there's three different.
I cannot. I have them by name.
Okay, what are, what are the names?
Uh, Emma for Disability Commission.
Okay, just give me a minute while I find them, just so we can determine which ones there, which um orders they're a part of. Okay.
That is uh
That's 25 point.
281, Alex.
Yep, 281. Okay, go ahead, counselor.
Gwen Nabad for Housing.
Same order.
Stacy DeKai for Planning.
Same order.
Okay.
Elizabeth Silver for Zoning.
That is the one that is being referred to City Services? Okay, so that is 25.301. Okay.
And the cash capital.
Is 25.286.
Thanks. And can you just uh can you read back the numbers that are for those?
25.281, 301, and 286. Counselor Elkins.
Um, could we also remove uh the minutes um to address the issues Ace brought up?
Or, okay. Were those, I thought Ace was referring to earlier minutes?
I thought the May 10th minutes, I believe, are where the corrections were needed to be.
Okay, sorry, I I pulled up and saw that Ace had made comment and uh didn't scan through, right?
We didn't have a meeting on May 10th, so the uh, uh, uh. Let's just remove it and we can talk about it, determine what what Ace was talking about. Okay. Any other removals? Okay, I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda with those removed.
Move to approve, second.
Motion made by Counselor Moulton and seconded by Counselor Labarge. No discussion on the consent agenda, so roll call, please.
Counselor Dubs.
Yes.
Counselor Elkins.
Yes.
Counselor Jarrett.
Yes.
Counselor Clemmer.
Yes.
Counselor Labarge.
Yes.
Counselor Moulton.
Yes.
Counselor Perry.
Yeah.
And Counselor Rothen.
Abstained.
Okay.
Okay, so that passes with seven yes votes, one abstention. Um, so for the first removal, 25.281. Uh, count, this, this was the three of the four. Um, and Counselor Rothenberg.
Yes, you mean Emma, Gwen, Stacy, right? Okay, so I'm just removing these so that I can make a comment as to the abstention because this is a mixed bag for me. Um, Emma is a strong yes for me. That's a constituent who's done great work in disability, so I absolutely approve of her reappointment. Gwen has also done great work in public housing as a public housing tenant. That's another strong yes. Stacy DeKai to the Planning uh Board is a strong no for Ward 3 because the Planning Board has not been serving Ward 3 well, so I'd like to see change there. So this will be an abstention, and those are the reasons.
Thank you. Entertained a motion to approve?
Make a motion to approve. Not gonna.
Motion made by Counselor Clemmer and seconded by Counselor Labarge. Discussion? Roll, oh, Counselor Moulton.
Uh, yes, um. Just one second. Uh, I concur with uh I concur with Counselor Rothenberg on her support for uh Emma Cornwell for the Disability Commission and Gwen Nabad for the Housing Partnership. They were both discussed Monday at the City Services Meeting, and I uh I understand Counselor Rothenberg's reason for not being there. She had a meeting with with constituents. However, I disagree strongly with her position on uh Stacy Dekey, uh, uh, who has been a, an exemplary member of the Planning Board during her first term. She's a former environmental analyst for the Massachusetts Department of Public Environmental Protection. She's brought that experience uh working uh with uh local officials throughout Western Massachusetts, and that knowledge that she gained through her DEP work to the uh to the Planning Board. And uh, she has uh she has put to use her uh academic training, a master's degree in public policy on the Planning Board, and I strongly uh support her reappointment to the Planning Board and urge all of my colleagues to vote for her.
Thank you. I also uh support Stacy Dekey's um reappointment and as well as Emma and Cornwall and Gwen Nabads. Counselor Labarge.
Yes, um, we had a lengthy talk at City Service. And she is unbelievable. I really have a lot of respect for her. And I supported her at City Service with a high recommendation recommendation to full City Council.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Counselor Elkins.
Um, I uh I, uh, out of fair disclosure, would say that I'm very close to Stacy Dekey. She's a dear friend of mine. Um, but I also uh support, of course, her nomination. I want to note, it is a troubling suggestion that volunteer members of civic boards and commissions um would uh be opposed uh simply for doing their jobs and for voting um in manners that uh um, that some people disagree with. Um, and and for um voting in favor or engaging in discussion um that some people oppose. Um, that is a just troubling prospect. So um, I hope also um that uh I ask all my colleagues to, of course, to vote for all of these um candidates or appointees.
Counselor Rothenberg.
Obviously, I don't think the Planning Board is doing their job. Otherwise, I wouldn't have made this choice. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Counselor Elkins.
I uh uh uh, the suggestion that the Planning Board is not doing its job as a general matter is uh is uh wild. Question that's is a general but in uh, review the projects before them often are um um asked to, you know, consider very differing uh opinions and strong emotions. Um, and uh and and they, so I'm just, I'm just gonna say that. It's a that that is, that's, that's a really difficult thing to suggest.
Any further discussion? Counselor Clemmer.
I couldn't get to my thing. Um, yeah, I just um commend all these people for for volunteering, stepping up to serve the city. Um, you know, with no compensation, um, just to know that they did a good job and that that we appreciate what they're doing. And um I agree, I know Stacy and um, and I think she did a wonderful job. And um, I know she's busy, so um, you know, it's a lot to take time out of their people's lives to be on those committees, so um, to volunteer. So I appreciate all of the volunteers that are stepping up.
Okay, seeing no more hands. A roll call, please, on approval of 25.281.
Counselor Elkins.
Yes.
Counselor Jarrett.
Yes.
Counselor Clemmer.
Yes.
Counselor Labarge.
Yes.
Counselor Moulton.
Yes.
Counselor Perry.
Yeah.
Counselor Rothenberg.
Abstained.
And Counselor Dubs.
Yes.
Okay, that passes with seven yes votes and one abstention. And yes, Counselor Perry, we can hear you. We move on to 25.301. And um, this was the appointments for referral to City Services. Counselor Rothenberg.
Yes, this is pulled because I oppose the referral of Elizabeth Silver. And in fact, I oppose that so strongly that I will vote no to the entire package.
Uh, Counselor Labarge.
Yes, um. I couldn't hear what um Counselor from Ward 3 stated about Elizabeth Silva. Could she, could you tell me what she just said about Elizabeth Silva, please?
Um, Counselor, can you try saying that again and make, we do want to make sure that that Counselor Labarge can hear, hear you.
Right. I thank you for that, Corvall.
I didn't say anything about her. I simply said that I strongly oppose the referral of her for reappointment to the ZDA.
I didn't catch the beginning of that. Thank you.
I'd entertain a motion for approval.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, uh, motion made by Counselor Clemmer and seconded by Counselor Elkins, I believe.
Yes.
Um, is there further discussion? Uh, yeah, I believe that our referral is mandated by the Charter. Or
It is.
Yeah. Yeah, so the, we would be in violation of the Charter were we not to refer this to City Services. Of course, we're free to vote against it uh when it comes back or to not recommend it.
Mm-hmm. Is there a reason, then, that we're voting on the referral?
That, that is, uh, there are many things that are required that uh we get to vote on. Okay, let's, if there's no further discussion, roll call, please.
Counselor Jarrett.
Yes.
Counselor Clemmer.
Yes.
Counselor Labarge.
Yes.
Counselor Moulton.
Yes.
Counselor Perry.
Yeah.
Counselor Rothenberg.
No.
Counselor Dubs.
Yes.
And Counselor Elkins.
Yes.
Okay, that passes with seven yes votes and one no vote. Uh, next is 25.286, which is the cash capital in order to appropriate fiscal year 26 cash capital to various cash capital projects. Counselor Rothenberg.
Can you read the order?
Ordered that pursuant to fiscal year 26 to 30 Capital Improvement Program, the following capital projects be appropriated from the General Fund fiscal year 26 cash capital account. Central Services Blueprint Scanning, $20,000. Information Technology Services, City Computer Replacements, uh, $65,000. Information Technology Services, City Public Wi-Fi Expansion, $35,000. Fire Rescue, Replace 2010 Division Chief of EMS Vehicle, $70,000. Planning and Sustainability, Shared Use Paths, $50,000. And Planning and Sustainability, Open Space Planning, $35,000, for a total of $275,000.
Thank you. So for Ward 3, this will be a yes for these projects and for the money to be released to them. The issue of the way in which we're financing them is a matter to be discussed at other times and is something we have a standing objection to. But since we're already at this part in the process, we will approve it. We approve funding these. We would just like them to be funded in different ways, not from our general fund. Thank you.
Thank you. I would entertain a motion to approve.
Move to approve them.
Second.
Motion made by Counselor Labarge and seconded by Counselor Moulton. Further discussion? Roll call, please, on approval.
Counselor Clemmer.
Yes.
Counselor Labarge.
Yes.
Counselor Moulton.
Yes.
Counselor Perry.
Yeah.
Counselor Rothenberg.
Yes.
Counselor Dubs.
Yes.
Counselor Elkins.
Yes.
And Counselor Jarrett.
Yes. That passes unanimously. Uh, the last item removed is, are the minutes of May 27th. Counselor Elkins.
Oh, I just wanted to make sure that we address if if uh uh Ace's uh concerns uh because those sounded valid to me. But if if I, if I misunderstood and those weren't the relevant minutes, um, then I would uh, so I just want to make sure we checked in on that.
Sure.
Because, because what, what they said was accurate, sounded accurate to me, right? But I'm not finding those in the minutes, those. So maybe I was wrong, or maybe I was misunderstanding which minutes were being referred to.
Well, there is, uh, Ace Taylor did speak and was referred to as he. Um, so we could, that, we could change that. And that, that, I don't know if that, Laura, do you think that would qualify as just a Scrivener's error?
Yes.
To have that be there?
My part.
Those.
Yes.
So that's um one, that that would address one of the concerns. And the other was about closing the hearing? Is that correct?
That is
Yes.
But we didn't close the hearing. We continued it.
Correct.
Okay. Well.
Double check the roll call record sheet. Um, I might have missed hearing if there was a no, but um, and listened to the recording, which I always do, but um.
Right. I mean, it could have been for adjournment. Uh, that was a vote that involved Counselor Rothenberg. Counselor Rothenberg, do you remember this at all?
I do remember. It was for Portia Bonner's presentation to us.
I remember you making a comment afterwards. I didn't remember you saying no on the vote to um continue.
I did vote no, and I made the comment. I did vote no, and I made the comment that she did not come and fulfill what the school committee had asked her to do, which was to advocate strongly for the school budget. And therefore, I was opposed to adjourning.
Okay, I'll make that change. Thank you.
Opposed to adjourning the entire meeting.
Yes, that's that's correct.
Okay.
Additional comment was not part of the record because we had already voted to adjourn. That is what I recall.
No, it was a spoken. It was a spoken no with the reason given at the time of the vote.
Right, there's no discussion on adjournment.
That'd be my recognition. So my my, so I would I would move to approve the amendments, I mean, the minutes with the the change made referred to ACES pronouns. And note that the vote on adjournment was what, eight to one, nine to one, or eight to one?
Seven.
And then the comment will be preserved in tonight's meeting. So that works just as well.
Seven yes votes, one no vote, and Counselor Dubs absent. Does that track, Laura?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, so that is now on the floor.
I second that.
Okay, I'm sorry. Yes, motion made by Counselor Elkins and seconded by Counselor Moulton to approve the minutes of May twenty seventh with those changes noted. Any further discussion? Okay, roll call, please, on that.
Counselor Labarge.
Yes.
Counselor Moulton.
Yes.
Counselor Perry.
Yes.
Counselor Rothenberg.
Yes.
Counselor Dubs.
Yes.
Counselor Elkins.
Yes.
Counselor Jarrett.
Yes.
And Counselor Clemmer.
Yes.
Okay, that passes unanimously. I have received a request from Counselor Roffenberg to take the reparations item out of order as there folks who are here waiting for that item. So with the council's permission, we will move down to that item. Are there any objections? Okay. So that is the Northampton Reparations Study Commission Request for Extension of Deadline for Submitting Final Report. Process note: At their June tenth, twenty twenty five meeting, the NRSC voted eight to two to ask to extend the Reparations Study Commission for one year. An extension of a joint commission requires the affirmative vote of the council and the approval of the mayor. By a vote of the city council on November twenty first, twenty twenty four, the council granted an extension of the original deadline from October fifth, twenty twenty four, to March sixth, twenty twenty five. I also wanted to note that tomorrow, the mayor and I are planning on working to schedule a meeting of the commission so that they may elect a chair and vice chair or co-chair, however they choose. So that then they will be able to meet and have that 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 then they will be able to, you know, put together agendas, et cetera. I also wanted to say that at the August, at our August twenty first meeting, I'm planning on adding an agenda item for discussion on an implementation committee or commission. So I would present the options as I am aware of them for how we could proceed with that then, and we can have that discussion. Okay. So welcome, Mayor Shara. And let's proceed with the discussion on the the extension that that this commission has requested.
Would it be possible to just call the question?
Calling the question requires a a motion, a second, and then a two thirds vote.
Okay, well, why don't I start by making a motion to approve the extension?
Is there a second?
Yeah, there's a second, though.
Motion made by Counselor Roffenberg and seconded by Counselor Dubs to approve the extension of two of one year. That is now on the floor for discussion.
Could I call the question?
Is there a second? Not seeing a second. The question cannot be called. Discussion.
Thank you.
Counselor Elkins.
So I so so I've been thinking a lot about this, about sort of what extension means and what it looks like. And a couple and I'm I'm not, I am just speaking in terms of logistics. This is a this was a this isn't a standing commission at this point. So there's no procedure in place in terms of how commissioners going forward, we appointed. The structure for how this commission was put in place involved involved soliciting applications from people in the community and then an interview process involving the sponsoring counselors and the mayor's office. I don't think that's sustainable going forward. I think if this is going to continue, that it needs to transition into to something like this other standing commissions and committees that the city has and perhaps route through city services or something to ease the burden of how that goes. The also the initial sort of document and structure of this called for certain members to come from like the Human Rights Commission and the Youth Commission and two members of council. I think any discussion of this ought to revisit that in terms of whether or not those are going to be requirements going forward. So when at the last meeting, when I talked about the I think I said something about, you know, the logistics of this and how how is it actually going to function and live as a as a a creature of this municipal government, these administrations, and the councils going forward. Those that's the kind of thing that I mean. I don't I don't. I'm not here with firm opinions about how that ought to be, but it's not a simple just voting yes to extend the commission as it is. There have to be some decisions made and some planning made about about how that goes is all I'm saying. And and I so that's my two cents.
Counselor Labarge.
Yes. I think I heard that a meeting Counselor Jarrett was going to be put in place with you and the mayor. Is that tomorrow?
So in order, well, first of all, the council will need to approve an approve an extension. For the or or have a plan to do that. Say, if we make this decision, if we delay this decision, then I would expect that I would, we would ask them to meet in the interim. But the mayor and I intend to schedule a a special meeting for them where they will elect a chair. And then from then, that that way that they can be represented here at council or and they have someone to put the agenda together. So that that is, but that meeting, the scheduling process would begin tomorrow.
Okay, I appreciate that because I think that is very important for to have that meeting with the mayor and be able to organize, you know, and let the Reparation Commission go ahead. We're hearing already from one of them this evening that they do have a chair possibly going into place there. So I want to thank you for having that meeting with the mayor also. Thanks.
So just to be clear, a chair has to be democratically chosen by the commission.
Exactly.
And that that would happen at a future meeting.
That's that's what I mean. You said that you were having a meeting with the mayor. We heard tonight from one of the members that yes, they do have a chair. Common sense and all your meetings that you have, you have to have a meeting outright to say, you know, we nominate so and so for chair. So that's all. I I'm just glad about having that meeting with the mayor so we can get this Reparation Commission back on track. Thank you.
Thank you. And just to be clear, the mayor and I have already had the meeting and the the decision we made was to begin the process tomorrow.
Right.
Counselor Moulton.
So I had a question for Counselor Elkins about her suggestion that perhaps one consideration is transitioning this special commission that was appointed by jointly by the mayor and council president to a standing committee. Would that differ from the implementation implementation committee that has been that it's among the recommendations?
Well, I'm not sure. I mean, I think I think that's a discussion, you know, within this body to vote on to decide on one of the sorry, cat did a thing. And 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 to be clear, the oh, my God, my cat is doing something loud. The that vote was was also was a vote to extend and also do an implementation committee, whether or not they are the same or the different or subcommittee of them. I think that's just a discussion, you know, to be had. I have to go take this thing away from my cat.
Okay.
Be right back.
Counselor Clemmer.
So with the new chair, a couple of people brought up that there wasn't there weren't enough people for quorum, but it sounds like there will be with the new chair. And if everybody else stays in the in the committee. Is that correct?
Quorum is six. So as far as I'm aware, there are enough people for a quorum, and then they they can proceed to elect a new chair.
And then next year, the people that leave that aren't running again would just be replaced. I assume.
Right. If if you like the counselors, for example, we know at least one counselor serving on the commission. It's not running again, so they would be replaced by another counselor at that point if we continue the current structure.
Thank you. Just wanted to clarify that.
Okay, I'm going to go to Counselor Roffenberg and then see if anyone else would like to speak. And then I see Counselor Elkins.
Yeah, I mean, the reason I I moved to call the question is because I can't imagine where, especially in the context of this particular commission, I can't imagine where it would be culturally appropriate for us to go against this commission's wish to continue. It's it was an eight to two vote. The whole you know, a huge part behind the reason we're doing this kind of work or asking them to do this kind of work is because for too long, there wasn't enough autonomy. There wasn't enough literal freedom. And so I just cannot imagine not honoring this request to extend. I think this is a very easy, easy yes, and I think a very indefensible no.
Is there anyone else who hasn't spoken who would like to speak?
Hi. Hi.
Counselor Perry? Yes, go ahead.
Sorry, I I am. I'm having technological difficulties, so I can't figure out how to wait, like raise my hand with my phone and doing that. So
Sure, sure.
I just want to speak as a, not only a counselor, but as a commissioner who did vote for an extension and just give some background in that part of that discussion involves the the talk about whether or not we can't have implementation plus also study at the same
Point of order.
A point of order has been raised. Counselor Roffenberg.
Yeah, and I just raised this respectfully on behalf of your fellow commissioners, who are my constituents, who are very concerned about the fact that Counselor Elkins and Counselor Perry would have an opportunity to speak tonight when they do not. Their council president said that they could not speak on behalf of this group. And that sounded like we were wading into that territory where we were making representations about, you know, representations on behalf of that group and what the discussion was. Unless we'd like to recognize the other members, I don't think we should be going there.
Perfect. I anyone can look at what we talked about.
Let me address
I don't really need to
Perry, let me address that point of order, which I don't think is a specific Robert's Rule of Order, so I don't think it counts as a point of order. But I I will briefly speak to my reasoning, which is that without a chair to who represents the commission and then therefore makes the decisions about who who presents and who who is chosen to speak. The there are open meeting law concerns because we can't have a quorum of the the body speak during this item. And I am not going to choose particular people which I would have to do or, you know, there's certain people would just not be able to speak. So I I see it as, you know, the the commission needs to choose the chair who then represents them.
Could we have a limiting instruction then?
Excuse me, I'm please wait to be recognized. So we could delay the vote and the commission could choose a chair in the meantime and could choose how they wish to be represented. But I I don't feel it's fair to have just because some certain commissioners who choose to come and get to speak and not others. So back to Counselor Perry.
I'm sorry.
Counselor Counselor Elkins and Counselor Perry are members of this body, and they get to speak in in that capacity. And there's really, I don't see a way to legitimately distinguish between their opinions as city councilors and members of the commission.
Well, I don't think you had a quorum that asked to speak.
Counselor Perry.
Yeah, so that's what I was saying. I am one of the people who voted to extend this commission. I believe in the work and I've been doing the work. I will leave anything else that Counselor Roffenberg thinks is inappropriate and just say that I'm I'm thankful to hear that there's going to be a meeting with you, council president and the mayor about how to move forward. I would also suggest that we check in with the other commissioners about whether or not we have a quorum. Because if we have not done that, I believe that it is just due diligence to check in with people and how they feel after doing the work we've done. I'll leave it at that until my next.
Anyone else who hasn't spoken like to speak? Okay, we'll go back to Counselor Elkins. Oh, you're muted?
Yeah, I was just saying, I I think the issues that I'm are the things I'm talking about are really just about sort of process and how things would function going forward. I would note, I voted also to extend. I was one of the people who who voted that way. I think a vote tonight would be premature, though. In the because it has to, it has to include what it's going to look like going forward. Not just a year. And and I also share concerns about the the quorum going forward. Just as also pointed process, if this shifts to something that's more standing or extended, it's worth noting that in if we're going to continue to have counselors on the commission on this commission, that it like like all our other committee and commission assignments, you know, needs to be sort of assigned at the beginning of of the term, whereas Counselor Perry and I that this is sort of extra for us. These weren't, this wasn't an assigned commission. We both said we want to continue this work. Which is which is fine. I just think whatever this work continues and whatever form it continues in, you know, needs to be sort of built for the the long term. And so some of my concern about just a simple up or down vote. A simple up or down vote as as it's sort of presented right now is that we don't, we don't have that structure. And, you know, and there's already going to be clear. We were losing our our youth commission. A person, Jeremy, is graduated from high school. Good for him. He's off to college. And, you know, I'm not going to continue on council. So so truly, just I'm I'm talking about procedure here and what what this looks like going forward. So.
Thank you. Let's see, Counselor Roffenberg had her hand up first, and then we'll go to Counselor Moulton. Counselor Roffenberg. Counselor Rothenberg?
I'm sorry, I think she probably needs to be unmuted. I'll make her a co-host because she.
Got it. She had to leave and then.
I apologize, Counselor Rothenberg. I'm trying to find you. Let's see. Difficulty. Don't know why I can't find her on the list. She's on my Zoom screen.
Listed as Quaverly Ward three?
Yeah, I just don't see it in the participants.
Got it. Somebody got me. No problem. Sorry.
Don't worry.
I got booted, so I missed some of that. Did Counselor Elkins say she was resigning?
No.
Okay, because there was talk about quorum. I know that the student, the youth commissioners already have a candidate up for their replacement. And you had 40 people, right, who wanted to be on this commission that didn't get on. And you had eight people who voted yes to continuing. So I feel like saying that this is premature or too soon feels really strange because you've got all the pieces in place to know that you can continue. And the commission has spoken and said they would like to continue. So unless, I'm not hearing resignations besides the chair. We know that Jeremy has left and that Kendall is ready to serve as a student representative. Are there any other resignations I'm missing?
Thank you. Counselor Moulton?
I have listened to the commissioners who spoke at the presentation at the end of last year. I listened in June. I listened tonight. I particularly, I value all of their points of view. But as a member of the city council, I particularly value the representatives from this body that have served throughout, Counselor Elkins and Counselor Perry. So I want to hear their reasoning on how we should proceed and in what form that should take. So any attempt to muzzle them, I find very unfortunate.
I do too.
Yes, only the planning board should be totally supported to do whatever they want to do.
Would there be, is there anyone else who wishes to speak? I will go ahead. So I'm in favor of granting an extension, but I would like to have more discussion about the implementation commission. And that's a discussion we'll have next month. So I propose that we grant a shorter, shorter extension in one year and then review that decision once we've decided on which path we're going to take for implementation. Okay, okay, just keeping track of people who, multiple people who haven't or haven't spoken. Okay, so we will do a round with Counselor Rothenberg, Counselor Moulton, and then Counselor Elkins again.
Implementation and the study are not the same. It would be an arbitrary shortening, in my view. They were very clear about the fact that longer time was needed for the study. The study time they requested was a year. And they wanted to be concurrent, is what I heard, with implementation, some of them. But they are not, the two are not like, they weren't saying they could do a shorter research period if they had a sooner implementation period. That wasn't the discussion. The research needs to continue for a year. That was the request. How would you, what would you be basing your decision on to say it could just be shorter? I mean, what do you know about that?
Counselor Moulton?
I'm just going to ask if you had a particular length of time in mind.
Let's keep talking and then I'll come back with that. To speak to that. Counselor Elkins?
I'm struggling a little bit as a voting member of the commission, having people who are not here and their intentions and the meaning of their vote interpreted by somebody who.
It would be so great if they could speak.
Counselor, Counselor Rothenberg, please do not interrupt your out of order.
I, I think, I wonder if we shouldn't table this discussion until after any meeting that you and, that could be put together. I, I think we need to get a real handle on what current members of the commission wish to continue. One of the difficulties about extending is not, of course, that the work goes on and that there's more work to do. It's that we started with a number of people on the commission who were, who committed to a period of time of work. And that was extended once and then we extended past that. Now we're asking to extend again. I think, I think that we really need to get a handle on who, having fulfilled the initial commitment and that they made to this commission and this work, are given the opportunity to say whether or not they can continue and wish to continue and what that leaves us with. So that if we are, if we are extending, what will our plan be for replenishing that and integrating it? And this part, I will say, is part of my vote, which was to extend to, to understand and have a plan and a thing to tell this commission, you know, from us as to how implementation and any extension would be sort of integrated and what we expect from that commission. New people coming on need to know what the commitment is and what to expect. And people who've given all this time thus far need to be given the opportunity to let us know what they want to do going forward. So I, this, that's the other reason why I think this is sort of premature. It's not a question of yes or no. It's a question of we don't have all the information. I don't feel able to make an informed decision at this point.
Counselor Rothenberg?
Yeah, trying to get a handle on this commission and telling them what you expect from them is exactly what I'm objecting to. It is for the commission to tell us what they need from us, and they did through their vote. The way that you treat young women is not good. The way that you treat black women is worse. And if there's a time to be out of order, it is in defense of those women who are my constituents. I find this discussion and this approach that Elkins is pushing to be extremely, extremely offensive to the Ward Three commissioners on reparations.
Counselor Perry?
Hold on. I'm just trying to navigate this. I agree that, I believe we need more time. I have to, again, stand up against misinformation that has been spoken about 40 applicants and all of these things. People applied over two years ago. We have gone back to talk to some of those folks and they no longer want to be involved. I believe right now we are wading into a back and forth that does not benefit the movement. It does not benefit what our work is supposed to be on this commission. I think that having more time will give us all the ability to really figure out where we are with this commission. I will leave it at that, but again, misinformation is my enemy and I will continue to stand up against that.
Counselor Perry, could I ask you a question?
Yes.
I was a little unclear. Are you arguing for that, that we should give more, more time? Meaning we should grant the extension now or more time that we should postpone the vote so that the commission can meet? And elect a chair, et cetera?
I am, thank you for asking.
Discuss its future.
Thank you for asking. I am, at the same time, kind of thankful. I voted and I would love to continue the work of study. But I also think for us as a city council, it is important for, to give this commission a chance to meet and see what the state of the commission is. But I would be in favor of having the meeting that you were intending with the mayor, touching base with all of the current commissioners and then revisiting this with the hopes that we can continue this work of the study commission. Does that answer your question? Move it to vote.
Yes, yes, thank you. And just to clarify, the mayor and I are going to work to schedule a meeting. And then the commission will meet and have those discussions.
Perfect. Thank you.
Counselor Labarche?
Yes, I'm going to say what I said before. I really feel that, to me, knowing that our council president is meeting with the mayor tomorrow is the beginning, is the beginning. And we need to move on here. And I think it's a proper way of doing it, meeting with the mayor and then having a meter, a meeting with the commission and let them pick their chair. We need to move on. And I think this is the right way to go.
Thank you. Counselor Rothenberg?
Yeah, I just want to say that Marsha Morris's comment seems to have been very prescient. When she said it seems like this is a constructive dismissal, right? I mean, they voted clearly for the extension and now we're using absences as a reason to not be able to give it to them. It's going to come back with all kinds of caveats from you, all kinds of things having to do with implementation, which don't have anything to do with the continuation of the study. This is egregious. I don't know what this seems to look like to you all. This seems like reasonable discourse. This.
We can't hear you. But you're not muted.
There's no information in that except their opinions. Every one of those commissioners that I represent on that commission were worried and stressed. Do you know how many phone calls, how many meetings, how much time and attention has put into figuring out how they are going to deal with your delayed tactics, with your obstruction to the extension? And calling it like, oh, I'm just going to meet with the mayor. Oh, I'm just going to get for information. Oh, we're just going to get a new chair. It doesn't look like what you think it looks like to them. It doesn't look good. This is a miscarriage of reparations, just in the process itself. It doesn't matter to me if Perry and Elkins are here as commissioners saying the same thing as you. They're not the only commissioners there.
Counselor Dubs and then Counselor Clemmer?
Thanks. Yeah, I've been just listening to everybody and just waiting until it felt like a good time to chime in. I guess I just personally haven't heard a good argument against approving this extension to tonight. I understand that there's going to be, you know, you're going to schedule a meeting to elect a new chair and that's a good thing. But I don't, but the commission has requested that we approve this extension for one year. And I haven't heard a good argument against that. I don't see why we shouldn't approve this. I mean, this is what, this is important work that they've been doing that needs to get done. Why can't we just approve their extension for a year? I mean, what is, what, so what about this commission should, do people think doesn't, doesn't deserve to continue the work that they've been working on? I can't understand what that argument, I've been listening to the other opinions of everybody and I, it's, I'm not following because whatever your reasoning for not extending this just doesn't make sense to me. And that's why I'm ready to vote for it, to approve it tonight.
Counselor Clemmer?
Yeah, I mean, we're not, we're not backburnering it. We're taking a pause to look for, you know, to, you can, and the mayor can, the council president and the mayor could talk to someone to be about being the chair. You know, we need to make sure everybody, that's all right.
May I, sorry, may I interrupt? It seems like there's this continual, continual idea that the mayor and I are going to meet and decide something. We've already, you know, and it is the commission that will make the decision about the chair. It is that, and that, you know, the commission alone makes that decision. We are going to do the scheduling or one, you know, of, to assist to have a meeting where they can elect a chair. That is our, our role is, that is our role at this point.
Thank you. Sorry for misspeaking. And I mean, it's just a pause so things can get sorted out to continue for another year. It's not, you know, we're not taking a huge break. You know, I think everybody wants to do this the right way. And, and I think by Counselor Jared and the mayor meeting to help schedule with the commission. And, you know, I defer to the two counselors that have been on this commission too, with Counselor Elkins, Counselor Perry. They have been there for all the meetings and they know what's going on. And I respect, you know, their opinion about how to move forward with this. And I think taking a short pause is, is not going to really change things much. And, yeah, I mean, it's the summer too, so, you know, people might be away. So it's a good time to sort things out with this.
Counselor Elkins?
I just, nobody is, I don't, I don't think anybody has argued or tried to make the case against extending. You know, Counselor Dubs, I appreciate that. I, that's not at all what I'm saying. I am concerned that whatever meeting gets scheduled, that we may not have a quorum. And so the ability to, even to elect a chair, even to, you know, to represent the entire, you know, the entire commission as it exists, it's not clear. The, I would encourage folks to go back to the document that council, I can't remember if we voted to approve it or if it was just presented as a sort of a structural document. But the commission is supposed to have not less than nine and not more than 11 members. It's supposed to have, it's, it isn't fatal to its structure if it doesn't have somebody from the Human Rights Commission and the Youth Commission, but we do have to have a quorum. And so, so that is my concern. Counselor Dubs, truly, I don't think anybody here has even made the argument. I'm just saying, I feel like we owe more to the commission and many people who aren't here and haven't been, been, had the opportunity to speak, to, to just, to be able to say what it means to extend. What are we going to do to replenish the ranks if we need to and how will that be? That, I'm just talking process. So there's nothing here about disregarding the vote that was taken that I voted for. So I'm not sure why that is so offensive. But I don't, it's not a good use of anybody's time to schedule meetings that then don't happen because we don't have quorum.
Counselor Rothenberg, then Counselor Perry, then Counselor Dubs?
There's important and ongoing work happening this summer. The winter is not an easy time for these commissioners to be able to interview the people that they are trying to connect with. There is much work to do and you're inventing imaginary problems when you say things like there may not be a quorum. There may not be a quorum at the next city council meeting, which I may remind you is not until the end of August. So what are we talking about here in terms of a short pause? You're talking about putting stuff on hold? What are you talking about? Tell me specifically, someone, someone in favor of this pause.
Counselor Perry?
Oh, I thank you for teeing that one up. But I just want to again state that I want to continue this work. I want to serve whether I'm a counselor or a constituent because I believe it's important work. And when Counselor Rothenberg talks about taking a pause, if we don't have a city council meeting until August, does that mean you stop doing your work? No, I believe it doesn't. What I want to say to everyone, especially to the public, but most importantly to my fellow counselors, is please read the draft reports, watch the meetings, see the work that's being done and being done. I know that Counselor Dubs said he's been listening, but I implore you, Counselor Dubs, to go back and watch the meetings, see how things have been working, see what we're doing. We have been spending years working on this. Before it was a commission that was a joint commission. This was the work of the North Hampton Reparations Committee that then reached out to our black population, which then led to myself, Counselor Elkins and Counselor Gore working on legislation. We have been doing this work. I say this as the father of two children of color, who I've been saying for years, just don't have simple things like a place to do their hair. My daughter is in high school now. I've been talking about this for years and I love studying. I want to continue studying. I want us to. Um, I want us to to make sure when we're making these decisions, we're doing it in the right way. Again, I want to continue the work. I will vote yes to continue it. But what Counselor Elkins is talking about is parameters. Do we need to have the same things? Something that held us back before was our lack of, uh, Human Rights Commission. It took a while to get that board back on and we finally got someone from that commission to join the Reparations Study Commission. And that person from the HRC was the one person who said, maybe we can do both implementation and study. So again, I implore you to go back and do the work and learn how we got here. Thank you.
Counselor Dubs.
Thanks, uh, um, thanks. I just wanted to clarify what I had said, uh, and and response and then, um, and then Counselor Elkins responded to me. So I just wanted to clarify what I meant, um, when I said that, you know, obvi obviously I I heard you when you said that you you I know that you voted to ex to for the extension. But what I was trying to say was, um, I don't see any reason, I haven't heard a good argument again, um, for not voting on that tonight. I don't see why we we don't, I don't see why we need more time. And I haven't heard an argument why we need for why we need more time, uh, to talk about why we need to extend this 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 commission that has requested, um, uh, an extension of their deadline for one year. That's the issue here. That's what they've asked for. And 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 I would like to approve of of their request. That's what I'm here to do. So that's what I I didn't mishear anybody, uh, that I I'm just disagreeing with you, that's all.
Counselor Rothenberg.
Yeah, I think we are being unfairly influenced by two commissioners on their own. And I move, I want to move to recognize Marcia and Renika, who would like to speak.
So you would be moving to challenge the ruling of the chair?
No, your ruling was that you didn't wanna invite everyone. I'm moving to recognize two people.
It of my ruling, what had to do with that? I we we don't get, I don't get to choose who who those people are. They did, all of the commissioners have not had an opportunity to decide whether they wanted to come and speak as individuals.
Why? Our agenda is public.
They, I would have wanted to have, okay. If we're going to go that route, I think we should delay the decision. Then no one, I mean, we're already months overdue on the, um, the extension, so that extension will, they can keep continue to meet. If we're going to do that, go that route, we should delay till August 21st. The commission continues to meet and then they can choose themselves who will represent them uh, at our August meeting. So I think we need to move toward, um, making, trying some just or seeing where where the will of the council is. I have heard approving for a year. I've heard approving for a shorter amount of time. Six months would be one option that I we could consider. Uh, and the reason that I put that is because I am not sure how the relationship between the implementation and this commission, how that will work going forward and how long, how long that should happen. As far as continuing the study and beginning the implementation. I would like to have some discussion about that and get the feedback of the commission as we're working on the implementation portion. So that's that's one option. The other option is to delay any decision about the extension to August 21st. Allow the commission to meet and clarify anything that that perhaps we're, you know, I'm hearing from Counselor Elkins, that there there may be need to be, that that some clarification might be helpful or some understanding.
Point of order.
Who is continuing.
Point of order, there's a motion on the floor. Are you amending or are you moving to amend?
No, I am laying out a a number of options. And then in the hopes that there will be either an amendment or, uh, that we will decide to vote on this original. I believe I saw Counselor Moulton.
Uh, yes, what, uh, what motions at this point would be appropriate, uh, referring to the motion that's currently on the floor? A a motion to postpone for a month or a motion to lay on the table?
It would be a motion to postpone.
Okay, I I and that 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 is appropriate at this point.
If you'd like to amend the motion, yeah.
Counselor Rothenberg, you're out of order.
I will make.
I'm asking a question, sorry, point of information. Is he asking for a separate motion to postpone or is he asking to amend this motion to have some kind of postponement included in the way it's worded?
A motion to postpone can be done in while there is an item on the floor. And it is, if if it passes, then that item is postponed and we vote on it at the next meeting.
My motion is to postpone until August 21st.
Is there a second?
Second.
A motion made by Counselor Moulton and seconded by Counselor Clemmer. Discussion on the motion to postpone.
I move to recognize Renika and Marcia.
Counselor Rothenberg, you are not recognized.
I don't know how you want me to. My hand is not going up, my screen is not going on. Is anyone else trying to speak right now?
That's very strange. You are a co-host. And you should have the ability to raise your hand.
I'll I'll make it easy for you. This will be my last comment. I move to recognize Marcia and Renika.
So you're challenging the ruling of the chair?
What ruling? I don't think you ruled on it. You just started talking about options.
So I'm not, I spoke earlier that I would not be recognizing other members of the commission.
Sure, I'm challenging the ruling of the chair.
Is there a second?
Yes, I'll second that.
Okay. Uh, this is debatable. This is on recognizing tonight certain members, uh, of the, you mentioned one you would like to recognize.
I mentioned two, Renika and Marcia. And my argument would be that they are just much better suited to give intelligent arguments and strong advocacy, which is sorely clearly needed in this discussion, which is going sideways. They should be able to represent their own thoughts, just as counselors Elkins and Perry have. You should have an actual robust debate from both sides.
Counselor Perry.
Yeah, I'm just wondering why you chose only two when there's more than two commissioners, not including myself and Counselor Elkins. Could you explain it to me whether or not that was purposeful?
They are my constituents.
Counselor Rothenberg, please wait until Counselor Perry is finished.
He just asked me a question, what are we waiting for?
But he was not finished.
I didn't, I didn't finish, but whatever, sorry. Counselor Rothenberg, you do you.
They are my constituents and they have asked to speak.
Is there any more discussion on the challenge of the ruling of the chair? Okay, this requires a majority vote.
Explain the vote, please.
The the vote is to recognize, um, two members of the Reparations Commission who are present. Renika, Montgomery and Marcia Morris. Counselor Dubs.
Thanks, yeah, I just wanted to quickly clarify, um, I I seconded the motion to hear them because I I I I'm I wanna hear their them speak. It was not be, I my my second thing was not, cuz I, um, am not appreciative or respectful of the opinions of the other counselors. That's that's not why I seconded that. I just wanted to clarify, it's just because I think that they deserve to speak, that's all.
Thank, thank you. Counselor Moulton, did that answer your question?
A yes vote would, uh, recognize them and no vote would uphold your previous ruling.
Correct.
Thank you.
Okay, roll call, please, on challenging the ruling of the chair, which would recognize, uh, those two members of the commission.
Counselor Moulton.
No.
Counselor Perry.
No.
Counselor Rothenberg.
Yes.
Counselor Dubs.
Yes.
Counselor Elkins.
No.
Counselor Jarrett.
No.
Counselor Clemmer.
No.
Counselor LaBarge.
No.
Okay, the motion fails, um, one, two, three, four, five, six, six to two. Uh, the previous motion is still on the floor, uh, to postpone. Further discussion on postponement to August 21st. Counselor LaBarge.
Yeah. Okay, could you repeat that again, please?
Sure. The vote that just that just happened?
No, now.
Now, the motion on the floor is to postpone this decision, uh, on extension to August 21st. And during that time, the commission could meet and elect a chair.
Thank you very much.
And determine who would be represent, who they would have represent them here on August 21st.
I appreciate that, thank you.
Okay, uh, let's roll call, please, on postponement to August.
I I'm sorry, I have a question.
Yep, Counselor Rothenberg.
I would like to know everything we need to know about what this commission needs in order to be able to meet. Do they simply need a quorum? Do they need you and the mayor to make some kind of request for them to have a meeting between now and August 21st? What are the parameters that will enable this group to continue to function? I need to be able to deliver that information to my constituents clearly.
Uh, they need to have a quorum, uh, that agrees on the date.
And who who will who will call for that in the absence of a chair?
The the mayor and I will do that.
When will you do that?
Tomorrow.
And what will you do if you don't get a quorum?
I'm not sure, we'll talk about that.
And how soon are you calling for them to meet?
As soon as they are able to. We will do a poll of some kind to determine their availability.
And will you be replacing members before that?
I'm not ready to say, to decide that at this point.
But don't you think that will affect their chances of having a quorum?
Let's see if we can get them to have a quorum. And then we will think about whether it's necessary to replace to replace members.
How quickly?
I'm going to stop answering your questions. I would like us to vote on this postponement.
I hope you'll answer them when my constituents reach out to you. Thank you.
Roll call, please, on postponement to August 21st.
Counselor Perry.
Yeah.
Counselor Rothenberg.
No.
Counselor Dubs.
No.
Counselor Elkins.
Yes.
Counselor Jarrett.
Yeah, um, yes.
Counselor Clemmer.
Yes.
Counselor LaBarge.
Yes.
And Counselor Moulton.
Yes.
Okay, that passes with six yes votes and two no's. We will take this up on August 21st.
President Jarrett, I need to be excused.
Would anyone like a recess?
Yes.
I need to, I need to be excused for the remainder of the meeting. I need to go talk with my constituents who are going to be very upset. Thank you.
Goodbye. Um, we will do.
I request a recess, I'll be back.
Yes, we will do a, um, recess until eight, uh, eight twenty-five.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much.
Hey, welcome back to the Northampton City Council. We'll move back up on the agenda to financial orders on first reading. The first one is twenty five point two nine five in order to appropriate one hundred and forty thousand eight hundred and twenty five dollars from Special Education Stabilization Fund to fiscal year twenty twenty six Northampton Public Schools budget. Two readings are respectfully requested. Mayor Shara or Director Nardi would you like to speak to this?
I'm happy to speak to it, Council President. So at the June twenty fifth special school committee meeting, the school committee voted to utilize the additional one hundred and forty thousand eight hundred and twenty five dollars that is available in this special and stabilization fund for this year for FY twenty six to support two special education teachers, one at the high school and one at Ryan Road. So the as this is the process, so the school committee voted, and so now I brought it to the council for your vote.
Thank you. Are there any questions about this order? Okay, I would entertain a motion to suspend the rules so that we may vote tonight.
Move to suspend.
Motion made by Councilor Moulton and seconded by.
Councilor LaBarge.
Councilor LaBarge. Discussion on suspension of rules. Okay, roll call, please, on suspension.
Okay, Councilor Rothenberg has left. Councilor Dobbs.
Yes.
Okay, Councilor Elkins.
Yes.
Councilor Jarrett.
Yes.
Councilor Clemmer.
Yes.
Councilor LaBarge.
Yes.
Councilor Moulton.
Yes.
And Councilor Perry.
Yes.
Okay, that passes unanimously. We'll now entertain a motion to approve.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion made by Councilor LaBarge and seconded by Councilor Clemmer to approve twenty five point two nine five. Further discussion. I'm happy that this money will be available for schools and for special education needs. Roll call, please, on approval.
Councilor Elkins.
Yes.
Councilor Jarrett.
Yes.
Councilor Clemmer.
Yes.
Councilor LaBarge.
Yes.
Councilor Moulton.
Yes.
Councilor Perry.
Yeah.
And Councilor Dobbs.
Yes.
That passes unanimously with seven yes votes. Next is twenty five point two nine six in order to approve final fiscal year twenty twenty five end of year transfers. Process note: suspension of rules to waive two readings due to end of year deadlines is respectfully requested.
Move to suspend the rule.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Motion made by Councilor LaBarge and seconded by Councilor Moulton to suspend the rules. Any discussion on suspension of rules? Okay, I do plan to ask Mayor Shara to to speak to this before we do vote. Roll call, please, on on suspension of rules.
Councilor Jarrett.
Yes.
Councilor Clemmer.
Yes.
Councilor LaBarge.
Yes.
Councilor Moulton.
Yes.
Councilor Perry.
Yeah.
Councilor Dobbs.
Yes.
And Councilor Elkins.
Yes.
Okay, the rules are suspended. That passes unanimously. Mayor Shara, would you like to speak to these end of year transfers?
I can, although Director Nardi is here, and I think she was going to speak to them, if that's.
Absolutely. Welcome, Director Nardi.
Good evening. So, thank you. These orders, today was the last day that we could actually do AP warrants, pay our invoices, and there is still one day or two days of payroll that still need to be paid out. So we are doing our best to make sure we capture anything that is over. So as you see on this order, we had a few things to add on to the order. Building inspectors had a few more bills come in, so I'd like to add to that the five hundred dollars. The mayor's budget advertising for licensing, and we also did the TV cabling licensing, which which caused us to overspend the advertising line. We also have other tuition for a student attending Westfield Technical and Central Services had an elevator service invoice come in and national grid bills that I need to cover that were unexpected, or the the elevator for one of the school buildings was unexpected to come in this fiscal year. And medical Medicare, the payroll taxes. I was thirteen thousand short on my estimate for paying those. And then city council salaries. So we always have to pay, like I said, there is like one day, the twenty ninth and thirtieth, that have to be paid out in payroll. So I miscalculated on city council and an extra seven dollars I think is going to be needed.
Thank you. Are there any questions? Entertain a motion to approve.
Motion to.
Second.
Motion made by Councilor Clemmer and seconded by Councilor Moulton. Any further discussion? Roll call, please, on approval.
Councilor Clemmer.
Yes.
Councilor LaBarge.
Yes.
Councilor Moulton.
Yes.
Councilor Perry.
Yeah.
Councilor Dobbs.
Yes.
Councilor Elkins.
Yes.
And Councilor Jarrett.
Yes. Okay, twenty five point two nine six is unanimously approved. Twenty five point two nine seven in order to authorize fiscal year twenty twenty six intermunicipal agreements. And mayor or director, would you like to speak to this?
Sure, we so we do this every year. We have to authorize our intermunicipal agreements. So these are either services that we provide other communities or that we share with other communities. So you're authorizing these agreements, and it's, you know, there's quite a few of them. So if you go through, you can see all of the work that we we do in other communities that we get compensated for, or that we sort of share services that we work on in the region.
Great, thank you. And since the two readings are not requested, this would be a referral either to finance or to the consent agenda of our next meeting. Councilor LaBarge.
Yes, we do this yearly. We've been doing this for quite a long time, and I would like to move this to go on the consent agenda.
Is there a second?
Second.
I think Councilor Clemmer got it. So motion made by Councilor LaBarge and seconded by Councilor Clemmer to refer this to the consent agenda of our next meeting. Any further discussion? Councilor Moulton.
Yes, I had one question, Mayor, about the expansion of the Valley Bike Share Program with two new communities, Westfield and Agawam. And I mean, I think that's the more communities that are involved in this Bike Share Program, the the better for residents, workers, and anybody who who either uses this service recreational or for whatever purposes for getting to a job or getting to appointments is great. My question is, does does bringing on additional communities have any financial benefit to Northampton? Because Northampton is the lead agency, right?
We are. So those communities pay fee, and we're actually working on getting, we're trying to work on getting state funding for this as well, and we've gotten grants for it as well for Valley Bike. But there we have like an administrative fee that Northampton gets for for sort of being the for being a lead community and for being sort of organizing.
So that there is a, I would assume it's a relatively modest financial benefit.
Yes, I would agree with you that the real benefit is building out this network and having it be, you know, have all the communities be connected and having, you know, it continues throughout this region so that we have sort of continuous you know, ability to go from community to community on these Valley bikes and and share in this regionally, which has been pretty remarkable. And we are there are still some holes, but we are trying to, you know, build out this this network as much as we possibly can in Western Mass.
Agreed. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Okay, roll call, please, on referral of twenty five point two nine seven to the consent agenda of our next meeting.
Councilor LaBarge.
Yes.
Councilor Moulton.
Yes.
Councilor Perry.
Yeah.
Councilor Dobbs.
Yes.
Councilor Elkins.
Yes.
Councilor Jarrett.
Yes.
And Councilor Clemmer.
Yes.
So that passes unanimously and will be on the consent agenda of our next meeting. We come now to orders twenty five point two nine four in order suspending section two eighty five dash four C in support of the Taste of Northampton. Mayor Shara?
So this is something that we've done for the last few years in support of the Taste. If you if you read the order, you know, it explains we have this ordinance that prohibits food trucks or mobile food carts in Central Business District. For the Taste, we asked to suspend that because many of the restaurants that participate have their own mobile food vehicles that they like to be able to use for the Taste. So it it helps them with being able to set up and participate in the Taste.
Thank you. Are there questions about this order? Councilor Moulton.
No, not a question, but an observation. You kind of buried the lead there, Mayor.
Taste of Northampton coming back.
The, I mean, I I agree, that's what we're voting on, but the significant elements to me is that the Taste of Northampton is kind of returning to its roots multiple days, two, and back at the Armory Street parking lot.
You're absolutely right. I should not have glossed over that. Yes, the Taste had been, and Councilor Moulton, you are really the foremost expert on this. Councilor Moulton has volunteered at the Taste for how many years?
Well, I don't know, going back to whenever it started. I think it started in nineteen ninety. Yeah. It was four days, but I think I I think, and relevant to the relevant to the food trucks, one of the difficulties for restaurants over four day Taste was maintaining their physical restaurant and bringing food to a booth at the Taste. So incorporating food trucks, great idea.
Right. Thank you. And also, I I should note that they are the preferred option. So if there is a food truck that, you know, one of our brick and mortar restaurants has that they can use fire and help prefer that, because that is the safest option for them to be able to operate at the Taste.
Councilor Perry.
Yes, I would again like to support my excitement about the Taste of Northampton, coming back to that place, the first time I ever worked at Taste of Northampton, for the new station, was in that parking lot. And I also wanted to just give a nod that this ordinance is something that we're looking at in our ordinance review. I think that just watching his brick and mortar restaurants and establishments have expanded to include food trucks. It just shows how important it is to just look at, look at the ordinances that we've had and adopt them to our modern times. And I look forward to eating a lot of tasty food.
Thank you. So no action is needed tonight. This will appear on our August 21st agenda, where we can vote on it then. So that brings us next to twenty five point two nine, no, twenty five point two nine nine in order to acquire property located on Drury Lane as the Mineral Hills South Manhand Connector. And do we have?
Daryl Valley.
Daryl Valley here. Welcome.
Thank you. So I I do have a quick presentation to give an overview of this project and this property and what we're requesting via this council order. See.
Great. Yes, there we go.
All right. So this is Mineral Hills South, Precious Young Living Trust, a potential conservation acquisition. So this is located right on the border between Northampton and East Hampton and sort of the the corner area there. You can see from this photo, it has amazing views of the Mount Tom Range. And for those of you who have been around Northampton for a while and remember Clear Falls, this is Sam Crescione's family. That was a recreational area that was open for many, many years and was a beloved, but very, very cold swimming spot in the Manhattan River. So some background on how the Office of Planning and Sustainability and the Conservation Commission deal with open space acquisitions. We're guided by the Open Space Recreation and Multi-Use Trail Plan. This document runs from twenty eighteen to twenty twenty five, so it will be coming up for an update this year, which we'll also be working on. And this sets goals for recreational development, open space acquisitions, and this area in particular, it was called out as a high priority. So here's a locus view of the city and where this property is located. And some more details about what the property looks like. It's about seventy two acres. There's some good baseline documentation, but not a formal survey, so we don't know exactly how how much it is, but it's around seventy two. And and this slide in particular provides a great view of the, you know, the puzzle piece that this would fill. So this was a property where it says Mineral Hills Greenway that was intended to be a subdivision. The Conservation Commission acquired that for open space protection, and before that, the Ridge Conservation Area on Route sixty six was a cluster development that included open space preservation. And this was acquired later as part of the the Wagon Trails Dog Park, which was to be located here. So, you know, now we have a Mineral Hills South Greenway that we didn't have twenty years ago. And that also connects, you know, just separated by. And that also connects, you know, just separated by a few parcels to the Hartnett Manhan Memorial Forest in East Hampton and Southampton. So this would be a, um, a notable addition to that area. Um, in a close-up view with a, uh, ortho photograph to show where we are. So Manhan River is on the left. Um, former gravel pit on the right. Um, some, some of the benefits that, that the property would provide are, are a really fantastic trail network. You know, some of the larger properties that we look at, you know, we're, we go in to do a the quick ecological assessment. There's no trails of any kind. We're bushwhacking through, you know, tons of undergrowth and, and all sorts of mountain laurel, but this one has a really robust trail network that already connects to existing trails at the ridge and beyond. So that will be a, a big benefit. Um, here's a view of the, the trail network in the rear of the property. Um, and, and just some, a few slides. I went out with Lori Sanders, who some of you may know, a co-director at Historic Northampton, also a renowned naturalist. And we're both really impressed by the ecological diversity and different types of habitats on this parcel. You know, if you do a desktop analysis, it doesn't reveal a ton. Um, you know, it, it looks like it would be a robust and maybe kind of interesting forest, but there's, there's so much to it. There's a lot of different types of habitats. The geology is really interesting. Um, there's things that are, you know, not, not rare or threatened, but are, are rare locally that we don't see a lot of. Um, and here's some different types of flora and fauna. Um, a lot of exposed ledge, a lot of lichen that we don't see a lot of in Northampton. Um, here's a carnivorous plant that's also rare locally. Uh, and more views of the exposed ledge. Exposed ledge and Mount, Mount Tom Range in the distance. And, and that's also rare in the city. And one of the benefits of, of this parcel and its topography is that it was used as parking for Clear Falls. Um, so there, we could potentially convert that back into a parking area. There is just a, a really sort of rough one, one or two space parking lot for the ridge. Um, but we don't have capacity for additional visitors currently, but this could potentially provide that. Um, and this area also could potentially be accessible through an all-person's trail, uh, which is also a little bit of a rarity, especially in the Mineral Hills. You know, some of the, the areas that we have protected for conservation immediately have wetlands, immediately have steep slopes that really preclude development of trails for um, for people in wheelchairs or people who just don't feel comfortable hiking long distances. And this is one that you can get to a, a really interesting bird-watching view shed area um, wi- without having to deal with any of those obstacles.
Mm-hmm.
Um, just some more views of, of what we're looking at. Um, this was a, a plant that Lori made sure, sure to call, call out. Uh, interesting plant with a sort of unfortunate name, bastard toadflax, which is also a rare locally. Um, amazing understory of mountain laurel, probably one of the, the biggest mountain laurel patches in the city.
Yeah.
Um, and a, a lot of the understory was comprised of American chestnut, which provides a glimpse into what this property might have looked like, you know, a hundred and hundred fifty years ago. Now, American chestnut grows to a certain size and then um, isn't able to make it anymore because of chestnut blight. Uh, but more chestnut here than, than I've seen in other places in Northampton. Um, also some mining history on this property. So it's, it's called the Mineral Hills because of its history with um, with mining, both for silver was the hope. Uh, silver was never found here, but uh, kalina and lead were what turned up. So what I'm standing in here is probably an exploratory um, dig from a hundred plus years ago, which was cool to find. Um, again, not mapped, but some really interesting wetlands and vernal pools on the site. And on the right is a um, interesting form of mushroom that doesn't uh, appear very much locally. Uh, here's a view of one of those vernal pools. More cool wetlands in the back of the property. Um, and, and just to show where, where we are with uh, state-mapped um, lands of importance. So it's map for biomap, low, local rare species. Um, it was indicated that there were probably some rare reptiles here, so potentially turtles, uh, maybe hognose snakes, local landscapes. So that's reflecting the, the views of Mount Tom that were evident in the um, pictures earlier and local aquatic habitat as well, associated with the Manhan River, which is also a cold-water fishery, which is a declining habitat with climate change especially. Um, so, so what's, what's great about this property? It's proximity to other conservation lands. It's existing trail networks that, that links to others, fairy habitats. It's sort of an acoustic sanctuary. That was a term that Lori used when we were out there. Then, when you're in the middle of this property, you're not hearing traffic, you're not hearing lawnmower or other human noises that are readily apparent other places in the city, so that, that's a benefit. Um, really blessedly few invasives um, that we'll have to manage. The interior of the property didn't have any invasive species at all, which is really pretty rare these days. And incredibly interesting geology and human history. Um, and we were also lucky to see a fawn on our resident, which was exciting.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so the order that's before you is asking for um, authorization for general obligation bond. That is a requirement of the State Local Acquisitions for Natural Diversity Grant Program. We have no intention of ever exercising this general bonding authority. This is only to show that um, for this grant program specifically, we do have those funds available if necessary. But we will be pursuing Community Preservation Act funds and other donations to make the project work. Um, so the, the order that's before you is um, driven by the State Local Acquisitions for Natural Diversity Timeline. So we, we've just applied for that this week. We are incredibly hopeful that they will grant us two-hundred-and-ninety-seven thousand dollars of a total acquisition cost of um, uh, with all of the soft costs included, just over seven-hundred thousand. Uh, we would be requesting the rest from CPA and, and donations. So, you know, it's a really unique opportunity. There are not that many large parcels left in Northampton to acquire. Uh, Conservation Commission, i- if we are lucky, is able to have one big acquisition per year. It's dwindled over time as um, these larger parcels are harder to come by. Um, but we're really excited to be able to move this one forward. And I, so that, that's sort of the, the quick overview, but I'm happy to answer any other questions you might have.
Thank you. I think you answered my main question, which is that this is not a financial order. It's not in the financial order section because even though it says, but, but yet it says we're uh, authorizing to appropriate, but because it is not a financial order, we're essentially not giving permission for you to appropriate. Uh, but you, it is what you need to do in a, in order to move forward with the state grant. Is that, is that correct?
Correct, absolutely. So we've applied for in maybe fifteen of these local acquisitions for natural diversity grants. We've been really fortunate to have received most of them. And this bonding authorization is something that's required and something we've done every year. We've never exercised this authority and have no intention to do so with, with this one. You know, we're confident we can, that we can make uh, the acquisition and the, the project work with other funding.
Okay, thank you. Counselor LaBarge?
Yes, um, I had a lengthy talk with Sarah today. And we mentioned about all the conservation land in Ward Six that we've been preserving here. And I think Sarah, did you just say seven hundred? Because I thought it was six-hundred thousand. That we were working with the family of the seventy-two acres at six-hundred thousand, correct?
Correct. So the, the agreed-upon purchase price is six-hundred thousand, but there's also environmental assessments that we have to do.
Okay.
The surveys and, and other soft costs, um, conservation restrictions.
So that's where we're getting, we're looking at six-hundred thousand to go to Sam and his family because Sam had passed away. I knew him very well in the family. They treated so many residents, even in West Hampton, using Clear Falls picnic tables and, I, I mean, just a wonderful family here. And I do know that some of that land is very buildable, correct?
It is, absolutely. So the, you know, there are wetlands on the property, but they are mostly towards the rear. Um, this could be divided into five approved, what are called approval, not required lots, just based on frontage. If a developer wanted to be creative, they could certainly figure out a way to um, w- working with the cluster development provisions uh, to do something else. But it, as a, as a one estate lot or a few estate lots, this is definitely a risk of development protected.
And, and, and I'm very pleased that, you know, neighbors have been contacted about that, correct? About what the city is planning on doing and just like the ridge. We worked on that tirelessly too. And that made sense. Everything is connecting here. Just like with a master's farm. And we had the Blakes um, and donating money to the city to conserve the lots in the back. I, I'm for this plan a hundred percent. Knowing that it's not going to affect the abutters, which is the powers right before, you know, after that sign and so forth with the trails. So I'm happy about this plan. I'm happy that we are conserving the seventy-two acres of property. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Mayor Sarah?
Thank you. I just wanted to take a moment to appreciate Sarah um, for that really great presentation. And just, you know, the planning department in general for the remarkable job that they do working with um, property owners who are interested in conserving land and uh, making these connections in these areas that we, you know, we want to have um, uh, you know, corridors and, and connect different parts of, of conservation land. Um, it, it's, I know it's a lot of work and um, they do a really remarkable job with it and um, are able to, to do something like this uh, without um, great cost to the city. But well, for remarkable benefits to the city and to the residents. So I just wanted to, to appreciate them. Thank you, Sarah.
Thank you, Mayor.
Yeah, thank you, Sarah. Well, no action is needed on our part. This will come to us again on August twenty-first, and that's when we'll vote on it. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sarah.
That brings us to ordinances that are not yet referred. So the first one is twenty-five point two-nine-two, an ordinance relative to always stop control for State Street at Trumbull Road. And um, is there anyone here to speak to, to these ordinances? I know Counselor Clemmer and I were at Transportation and Parking, but before I did that, I just wanted to check to see if there's anyone. Okay. Um, this, is there, are there any questions about them or we, you know, we'll, there'll be a, we'll take them up at Legislative Matters? And then, of course, we'll take them up again when they come back to council. Um, expected to be on August twenty-first. Uh, and then the other one is twenty-five point two-nine-three, an ordinance relative to parking on Bedford Terrace. I propose that we uh, refer these two as a group to Legislative Matters and then see if there's any further comment. Would anyone like to make that motion?
I'd move to refer both.
Let's second that.
But it matters. Sorry, go ahead.
Okay. Motion made by Counselor Elkins and seconded by Counselor Dobbs to move twenty-five point two-nine-two and twenty-five point two-nine-three uh, to refer them to Legis- Legislative Matters. Any further discussion? Okay, roll call please on referral to Legislative Matters.
Counselor Moulton?
Yes.
Counselor Perry?
Speak, yeah.
Um, excuse my nasal voice. I'm
I know.
Counselor Dobbs?
Yes.
Counselor Elkins?
Yes.
Counselor Jarrett?
Yes.
Counselor Clemmer?
Yes.
And Counselor LaBarge?
Yes.
Okay, that passes unanimously. And uh, we expect to take that up. Uh, is it six o'clock on the week from today on the seventeenth? Is that correct, Counselor Elkins? Yes. Great, looking forward to that. Okay, that brings us to the last, yes, Counselor LaBarge?
Yes. Weren't we supposed to vote on that Drury Lane?
No, um, it was first reading, so we're going to vote on it uh, on the twenty-first.
Okay, thank you so much.
You're welcome. So that brings us to the last item on our agenda, which is a zoning ordinance that is not yet referred. It's twenty-five point three hundred, an ordinance reducing minimum off-street motor vehicle parking requirements and adjusting bicycle parking requirements. Um, so I propose that Counselor Elkins, you and I uh, read the whereas sections and then sort of summarize the um, the intent and then uh, vote on the referral.
Sure.
So um,
Are we gonna share screen or do you wanna?
Sure, Laura, would you mind sharing screen with this item?
Yes, let's see. Be a moment.
Okay, whereas unneeded off-street motor vehicle parking requirements add thousands of dollars per outdoor space and as much as fifty thousand dollars per garage space to the cost of housing and to the cost of doing business. And?
Whereas unneeded motor vehicle parking fills up land that could be used for green space, trees, parks, more housing, businesses and community or community amen- amenities. And?
Whereas requiring motor vehicle parking that is not needed is a subsidy of car ownership at the expense of transit and other modes, which is at odds with our climate goals. While bicycle parking requires little space, promotes non-motor vehicle travel and furthers our climate goals. And?
Whereas motor vehicle parking adds to the urban heat island effect and increases stormwater runoff. And?
Whereas developers prefer to provide as much parking as needed to satisfy market conditions, but not more to avoid increased construction costs. And?
Whereas the Unlocking Housing Production Commission, appointed by Governor Maury Healy to study and report on, quote, "how to state local laws, how state and local laws, regulations and practices could be revised so as to increase the supply of housing that is affordable across a wide range of incomes and available throughout a broad spectrum of neighborhoods," end quote, recommended in its February twenty-twenty-five report, quote, "eliminating parking requirements statewide for any residential use," end quote. And?
Whereas parking management techniques such as metered parking, limited-time parking, monthly permits or residential parking permits can be used to address the availability of on-street parking in neighborhoods, particularly those within walking distance of downtown and village centers. And?
Whereas new parking management techniques and revenues can be used to further enhance street, bicycle and sidewalk maintenance.
Be it ordained by the City Council of the City of Northampton and City Council assembled as follows. So I won't read through every detail of this, but I can give a summary. Um, so the first part is that essentially it changes for residential uses throughout the city. The current requirements are um, one, for most, most units. Uh, one space per uh, per unit if it's a thousand square feet uh, or less. And um, two spaces per unit if the unit is more than a thousand square feet. So what this does is it makes it that it's one space per unit. Um, even if you have a larger unit, one, only one space is required. And then it also does that in the um, Office Industrial District, which uh, does allow housing above the first floor. Then um, and it also in Central Business, um, there are a number of, uh, this is in Central Business Core and Side Street. There are a few uses which still require additional parking um, on-site. And in these districts, there is public parking available, um, whether it's metered parking or monthly parking. Um, you can get a permit to park in many lots for forty-five dollars a month. Uh, you can uh, park in the garage for more than that. Um, I forget the exact number. But it's also that there's plenty of um, metered parking in the lots available and that these uses uh, do not need to require, should not need to require their own parking, um, which in most cases I think would basically not be feasible in the Central Business Core and Side Street. Uh, and we can talk more about that at, at the hearing. And then finally, oh, oh yeah, the next, the, the section about open space. Uh, it adjusts the definition of open space to, to include bicycle parking. Um, and um, that, that is that, that is the primary change. Terrorist areas, oh no, that's, that's already included. So it just defines it a little differently and includes bicycle parking. And then it adjusts the bicycle parking requirements to, to increase them for residential use and adjusts them off also for some other uses, some, in some cases moving them decrease, but in most cases an increase. So that is the order. And I would like to move that this be referred to the Housing Partnership and to Legislative Matters. The Housing Partnership is going to meet the beginning of August and they have asked that we refer to them items that are housing related, since this touches on quite a bit on residentially parking. I think that's appropriate and its goal, you know, one of its goals is to decrease the cost of, of housing by not requiring as much parking and, you know, provide additional space for other, other uses. And I just wanted to just address the, that this, this is beneficial to everyone who's trying to add housing, whether they are a private or a public developer or an individual who wishes to add an additional unit on their property. It can be, if you have a small lot, it, it can be quite difficult to, to both add the additional housing that you need and to also provide the, the parking, that's the, the additional parking that's required, even if you're not planning on using that. So that, that this could enable some ADU style development that would otherwise be very difficult to accomplish. So was there a second on that referral? Okay, motion made by Counselor Jarrett and seconded by Counselor Labard to refer this item to, oh, I'm sorry. I should also say to the Planning Board. So the Housing Partnership, Legislative Matters and the Planning Board. Counselor Labard, is that? Adjustment, okay, great. So motion made by Counselor Jarrett, seconded by Counselor Labard. Any discussion? Counselor Moulton?
No, I did hear Counselor Elkins say earlier that this will be subject of a public hearing.
Yes, absolutely. That is required for zoning ordinances, so that will be scheduled. And Counselor Elkins, would we probably be looking at the second week of August? I know typically a Planning Board meeting and
Yeah.
Legislative Matters.
Yeah, just as a, some housekeeping, we'll, we'll circulate some possible times and, and try and coordinate with the Planning Board's existing meeting, depending on what's on their agenda. So more, more information coming about that. Tomorrow, certainly early next week at the very latest, so we can get things posted.
Great, and Counselor Elkins, did you want to add anything more? I kind of ran through the whole thing, but I want to make sure you get an opportunity to speak to it as well.
You know, I think for the most part I would just save my remarks for the Legislative Matters meeting and, and when we, we bring it back. But I'm excited about this legislation. I think it moves the ball forward on several issues that are stated policy, you know, goals of the Sustainability Resilience Plan as well as addressing housing needs and, and, and also addressing some things that have proven to be obstacles to people being able to take advantage of some of the reforms we've made to zoning to, in, in, with an eye toward increasing housing and, and these things. So I, I look forward to a robust discussion from the community and with the Housing Partnership and the Planning Board and, and we'll, we'll begin that scheduled, so it's a lot to hear about and talk about and think about.
Great, thank you. Yeah, then we're planning on reaching out to neighborhood associations and, and groups and encouraging them to come to the public hearing. And so please spread the word among your networks as well. Okay, seeing no further comments, roll call please on referral to the Housing Partnership Legislative Matters and the Planning Board.
Move to approve.
Second. Counselor Perry.
It's already on the floor, right? Yeah, yeah, okay, so we're just voting on that.
Okay, Counselor, okay, Counselor Dubs.
Yes.
Counselor Elkins.
Yes.
Counselor Jarrett.
Yes.
Counselor Clemmer.
Yes.
Counselor Labard.
Yes.
And Counselor Moulton.
Yes.
Okay, we look forward to those meetings being scheduled. That's the last thing on our agenda, so could entertain a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
Motion made by Counselor Labard and seconded by Counselor Elkins. Roll call on adjournment.
Counselor Dubs.
Yes.
Counselor Elkins.
Yes.
Counselor Jarrett.
Yes.
Counselor Clemmer.
Yes.
Counselor Labard.
Yes.
Counselor Moulton.
Yes.
And Counselor Perry.
Yeah.
Hey, thanks everyone, see you on the 21st or sooner.
Okay.
We are adjourned.
Thanks, everyone.
Thank you.
Sorry I couldn't see you.